Call this meeting to order, determine as the form president, Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Flotis, and myself. We have a forum. Mr. Nettleton, if you'd lead us in the pleasure of leading this.
Pleasantly, this is the flag of the United States of America. And we are the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whatever the injustice we're all.
You look like Wyatt Earp. Well, you needed your guns, now they're in the tuck though, right?
No, that's not here, dude.
Item four, discussion, possible action, canvassing on November 3rd, 2020 election returns, declaring results, this is number one.
Good morning, commissioners. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your support during this election. It was very much needed, and it was very well given, and so I appreciate that very much. On your packet, I have three reports. There's one dated 11/3 at 7:11 PM. That was the early voting report that was first announced at 7:11 PM, which had a total of 10,574 voters who voted in person. And then the second report was done at 12:23 AM on 11/4, and that had, by that time, as far as the counting and how it was progressing, we were at 14,562 voters. And the final one, which is the one on top, which is the one you don't have to canvas this morning, has a total of 15,421 voters. And that's the one that has numbers written off to the side. Before we get to these numbers, I wanted to give you an idea of how we got there. The in-person is pretty well defined. People show up, we process them, and they vote in person. That's the 10,000. But the other part of that is the people that participate through the mail. And I wanted to give you some of those figures because I know that you all saw me running around crazy, but there was a reason for it. We had a total of 2,453 applications that were submitted by mail. We had a total of 2,453 ballots that were sent, okay? So each one of those, 2,453 applications that were received, okay? And we sent out 2,453. However, one of the things I want you to keep in mind is that everyone, it seemed like everyone, first outside of Texas, within Texas, had an idea that everybody and anybody that was 65 years or over was going to get an application. So they did not coordinate their efforts, and therefore people received five cards, six cards, and they were responding to all of them. So in order for us to avoid any fraud or any duplication of somebody getting two ballots or three ballots or more, each one of those applications had to be compared to what we already had received. So in essence, we handled each one of those 2,453 three times.
Okay, you just answered one of the questions I was gonna ask. So individuals would have received...
Not from us, because we were being called and says, "Why are you sending me another one?" We didn't send them. We didn't send anybody applications. We received applications and we responded to them, but we, the office county, the Valverde County, did not send out automatically applications.
Because that was one of the calls, or some of the calls that I received in the last couple of days, that they've received a lot of ballots, I suppose, ballots or applications?
Applications. And that's what it was...
The two of them right away, they went back and they responded, "Well, I'm sorry, they were not ballots, they were..."
No, we had the Democratic State Party, the Republican State Party, we had the National Democratic Council of something, we had, we can make a list of all the different organizations that were out there just sending these, and they were not, people were not asking for them. They just took our voter registration list, looked at everybody that was over 65, and mass sent those out. So...
And that came from both parties?
From both parties, different political organizations, candidates, you know, candidates also sent out. We don't know where they came from, but we were getting three, four, or five applications for the same person. And in order for us to not send someone more than one ballot, not to say that maybe one or two got by us, okay? But we had to handle the 2,400 or 2,500 applications, we had to handle them a total of minimum three times, minimum. And so some of them were five times, some of them were six times, and so we're looking at, you know, when you look at it that way, we're processing about 8,000 applications, because you have to take the time to look at it and see and make sure, compare dates of birth, make sure it's not the same person, not the same address, not the same thing, so that you would only send it one time. So that's what happened. But we do not send out applications. We get requests from people, we have a lot of phone calls, and people say, "I want the ballot by mail." We will mail them an application if they request them, but we don't arbitrarily send them out to anybody just as a mass. When we sent the ballots out, we sent out 2,453, because that's what we had qualified as being eligible to get the ballot, okay? Now, keep in mind that we sent those ballots, and it's a process. You have to, there's circumstructions that have to go with it, there, it has to be mailed a certain way, it has to be placed in a certain color envelope, and we have to put postage on those things. And if you recall, both the city and the hospital had to get their ballot reprinted. So by the time the death error was recognized or noticed, we had already sent out 800 FBCAs. And those 800 got the first ballot. So we had to resend those ballots once the new ballots were printed and gotten. So we're really sending almost 3,000. See, the 800 was part of the 2,453.
Who paid for that?
Right now, that's what the vendor is working on, but they, the city and the hospital will be paying for the reprint on the ballots.
The mailing and everything?
The first ballot that went out, we were required to send them, because they're a PCS.
And how many of them did you send out?
800.
800, how many did you get back?
We don't divide them up, because we, once we get the ballot back, you should know whose ballot it is, and so we just keep track of what we sent out, okay? Out of those 2,453 ballots we sent out, we received back 2,116 ballots. And that includes everything, okay?
Do we have an issue with the post office? People getting ballots, people getting ballots back.
There were some instances where I believe that it could have been handled better by the post office, but overall, they make themselves totally available to us. Especially Belinda, she's the one that's having to go at 4:07 AM. See, if you go before 7:00 AM and deliver the ballots that are scheduled to be here and locally, they get delivered the same day, and I can tell you, they were delivered the same day.
There's a lot of people saying that there were some issues there. I didn't believe there was, but I mean, I'm just asking. I understand there's some individual issues.
Yeah, I don't believe that it was to the magnitude that it affected the results of the election.
I do know there were a few instances, and we had the discussion of one of them.
Yes, yes.
And I appreciate you taking care of it.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I want the court to know that at the county clerk's expense, but it was, at the last minute, like within four days of it being, you know, Election Day, we did have some FBCA voters that had, were still telling us that they did not get their ballot. So we FedExed a lot of those, not a lot, but quite a few ballots to them, and they turned them right around. They turned, we got it to them one day, they turned around and FedExed it back to us. And so those, I would think that out of the ones we did send, we got everything back except for maybe three of them, no.
What's the deadline on that, for them to get them back? I understand they have to be postmarked by Election Day.
It was this Monday.
This Monday?
Yes.
They have to do that day? As long as they're postmarked by the Election Day?
Correct. And they have to reach us or my office by 5:00. Okay, so...
Have you got any instance?
I'm sorry?
Have you got any instance then?
Yes.
Were they postmarked by then?
Yeah, you had some that were dated October 23rd, remember? Some of them were, yes. The answer's yes. Okay, so out of those 2,116 ballots that were returned, the court needs to understand that each one of those ballots had to be handled individually. When the ballot gets here, the first thing that is done is it's postmarked, I mean, if we stop it, so we know what time we received it and the date we received it. Then we have to go put it together with the application, and the application needs to be put together with the ballot, because the signature verification committee needs to qualify all of those. And what they do is they compare the signature on the ballot with the signature on the application.
How many of those got thrown out? Because they either didn't match, or there was questions about other, and they weren't sent through?
Um, where's my, okay, well, I'm getting to that. Can you bear with me just a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so, and once it's put in a separate jacket, you have to put them together by precinct, because the ballot board needs to qualify all of those according to the precinct there. So then they go through a process of what they do. Now, from the ballots that were received by mail, 100 of them were rejected, okay? Now...
Or...
Excuse me?
Or what reason?
Most of them were not registered. Now, these, if they're by mail...
How did they get a ballot if they weren't registered?
FBCA voters do not have to be registered. If they submit the proper application, which can be an FBCA or a FOAB, they, the federal write-in application is a FOAB. They have the right to even print their ballot out, and it gives them the authority to vote for federal and state. So they will make their vote known, like what do they want, who do they want to vote for? However, if the FOAB is not accompanied by an FBCA, we cannot take it. So all those considerations have to be made as all these ballots are coming in, okay? Out of, out of those ballots, the 15,400, whatever it was, 800 of those ballots had to be resolved by the Resolution Board. And that was because when they are getting their ballots by email, and they can switch, they can change their mind, because they've sent us an email and say, "We want the ballot by email." Then they, they saw that it was getting later, they were having to move somewhere, they'd send us an email and say, "I want to switch it to email, because I'm afraid I'm not going to get it." So from the 800, 538 came from early voting, and 262 came from Election Day, okay? For the total of 800, okay? Now, the Resolution Board is made up of three people, and it's both Republicans and Democrats, okay? And each ballot, each one individually, needs to be resolved by these three people. And you have a caller, and you have a person that's marking the ballot, and then you have one person that's observing to make sure that the way the caller called the numbers, I mean, called the vote, is the way it's being marked. So if you take 800 ballots, and you figure out that you got to do one at a time, you know, there was a time we had at least three or four, like three or four Resolution Boards going on at the same time. So that's the magnitude of what we were having to deal with before we could put them in the machine to count.
Speaking of the machine, I understand you have some issues with the machine. It runs one or two ballots on the mail-in, jammed, and then it starts over?
Well, yes and no. If we use the M650, we have a better percent enter, how many get by, and then it stops, okay?
What's causing that? Is it just the way they're printed, or the way they're folded?
No, it's, it's the way they're folded, because they have to fold them to get them back to us. We fold them to send it to them by mail, and they fold it to send it back to us. So by that time, it's re-creased, it goes through the post office machine, then sorts them and all that, and it also goes through our machine. But we take every ballot and open it up and try to strike them out as much as we can. And we have had better luck running the M650 with those than we have the M100. We have set up M100s too, and I set those up to handle the resolved ballots, because if you're resolving, you're getting a brand-new ballot, and so it's not folded, so there's no reason why it shouldn't go through that. So we use the combination of things, whatever would get the thing done faster.
All the equipment will?
Everything went well. We do have a couple of machines that either we need to replace, or the part that was done, and when they come in to certify it before the election, they did find one or two things that needed to get done. We had like eight or nine machines that needed to have their battery backup replaced, and we did that. But there's two or three machines that we just can't repair. I mean, we just...
Someone needs to replace. When do they make that machine anymore?
No, we have to get it off of somebody that's bought new equipment and had the same kind of equipment we did, and see if they want to either, you know, transfer it over to us, or sell it to us, or...
Otherwise, you're replacing everything?
Excuse me?
Otherwise, you're replacing everything?
Yes. Okay, now, the other question we get a lot is provisional ballots. And the provisional ballot happens when the person shows up to vote in person, and you cannot find them on the voter registration list. And we did have some issues during early voting, where we found that the person was registered on the state computer, but they were not registered locally. And out of the 200, we had 274 ballots, provisional ballots passed. 129 were from Election Day? Or...
Election Day?
Okay, 129 were from Election Day, and 145 were from early voting. Out of those, 129 were accepted, and 101 were rejected.
How did it, how was it possible they're registered on the state side but not on the local side?
I don't think so, but they are. And some of them said that they had registered by the deadline, because the qualifying date's at October 5th. We've been going through them, because I've never had a ballot board reject that many provisionals, but the majority of them were not opened by the ballot board, because it said already that they were not registered, and that was the recommendation of the VR. So we, we don't go any further, they don't go any further. If it says they're not registered, that's where they stop. They don't open the ballot, they don't check anything else.
Our list doesn't match the state's?
No, not in all the cases. On some cases, during early voting, we were able to call, and they were able to check, and they found their error, and they corrected it, so we were able to let the person vote. But that's only during early voting. Election Day, it's really hard to do that. But we do have quite a bit that, and we're going over them right now, because I've never had a ballot board reject that many provisionals. But then we've never had this many provisionals.
Now, the question, was it on percentage, or just sheer number?
I think it was just based on what they had in front of them, and if the recommendation of the VR was that they were non-registered, they don't have the means to check it.
So will we be, I guess we'll be going back and trying to compare our list to whatever the state has?
Well, that's something the VR needs to do. We will provide him with a list. In fact, I think we corrected one or two, right? We did correct one or two, because the ballot board hadn't met yet.
The list that you have right now, you'll be giving to the voter register?
Yes.
Okay. When you say you don't have the ability to check it on Election Day, why do we not have the ability?
Because it is not the responsibility of the clerk to check it at that point, or the elections administrator. It is, the duties are divided up.
I understand that.
So we have a, we can get into the state computer, just like the VR, and we can check them, but we don't have the ability to change that decision.
So why is it two separate departments? Why would it not be one single department that does it all?
That's the way it was set up here a long time ago, and that's...
How do most counties do it?
If, if you have, there are places that, like if they're too small, they put the two departments together. If, if they're too big, by that time, you have a elections administrator.
But they handle the voter control and everything?
Yes, yes.
So wouldn't it not make more sense that they're all in one place? We tried that.
As long, as long as, see, you can make changes how you want it, but if the election code doesn't change, the duties and the DVS, and then make the changes that need to come, it's not going to happen.
We tried to put it all in one place, and we tried to establish an election administrator.
So, you know, it just needs to be worked on, to be honest. It just needs to be worked on the way it's supposed to be. And I think it needs to be properly staffed, you know, one person doing it is not going to be enough. This is a, this is something that has to be done all year.
The election, the way that you ran at this time with everybody, if you could get everybody on board, the way, not having this time where we could have the election, where everybody had their election at the same time?
Yes.
And we were to help with more people, this would be the way to do it?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And I kept thinking, six minutes ago, through a redistricting?
Yes.
And I know you've already had some meetings with the city and school.
Yes, yes, sir.
So at that point, I mean, we are, we're set that we could actually fix everything.
We need...
Hopefully in redistricting, we can get everybody on board in the same direction.
I would very much like...
There is some discussion in Austin about moving all elections to a single day, so there may be some bills that come out of the next session that we won't have.
You know, when Comstock decided to go with Valverde County, which was like three or four years ago, that's when they gave everybody the option to come with the county, but they left it up to them to decide.
But, but...
And, and that didn't happen. It came, it only came in the way of Comstock.
We had a lot, a lot, a lot of good comments. We had very few negative comments, and those were just people that they weren't used to doing it like this. You know what I mean? It wasn't that it was bad, we just, we've never done it like this, and why would we do it like this?
And we've never had the space that we have. We've never, you know, COVID, yes, I understand, we have our problems, but it also presented some opportunities for us to show what we can do.
I was very impressed with the way you handled it, and the way everything was organized. When I went in to vote, it was simple and easy, and the process worked probably better than I had seen it work in a very long time, because we weren't running around town trying to find different places.
And we also had the opportunity to try different things when we had the runoff in July, in the heat, and we didn't expect that to be a problem this time. It wasn't, but it was super cold in there, because they could not regulate that air conditioner.
Ms. Jane, why was it moved from out there back to here for Election Day?
It was not, it was not moved anywhere. Election Day is...
Why wasn't it all held out there, continues through?
Because the Civic Center is also an Election Day polling place. It cannot be your main center of, you know, where you process everything. Here, the machines are here, and they're upstairs, and they're like really heavy, and they're all calibrated, and they're all set to go before Election Day even comes. So to try to move those machines over there, and they have to move them back.
The machines for county?
Yes.
So my question is, why wasn't the election held there and the county held here?
It was done that way.
Election Day?
Election Day.
Election Day, we just have a lot of polling places to make it easier for everybody to go vote in that precinct.
Yes, yes. And that's something that had to be decided between all five entities that were having elections.
All right, I'm not complaining, just a question. I have been asked that question.
Yes. If, if we had a building in, I have discussed that with the judge, I think everything could be held in one place. I do believe that this was the perfect opportunity for those entities, for us to prove to that entity that we know what we're doing when it comes to elections, and that we can do what needs to get done. I think they had doubt about that, that kept them from coming in with us. This being thrown together by a proclamation from the governor helped them understand this is how it would work.
Very nice.
This is how it would work if we were all in one place, and also if we had elections all at one time. I have made my, what my priorities known to the judge, the lead needs to come from Valverde County. We cannot depend on any other entity to handle redistricting. And redistricting needs to be handled by Valverde County. We are the bottom, we are the base for all these other entities to have their elections. And if we can't get them on the same map, on the same playing field, on the same precincts to match...
And ours is harder, and like you said, ours needs to be the footing that everybody sort of...
Because we're the county.
Well, and ours is harder when we start getting into different demographics and everything. Ours is going to be harder, because it's the whole county.
Right. And I think it's just a matter of that in the past, individuals once have gone into redistricting, and not emphasis on what is going to be better for the county, or better for the voter, or better for any of that. I think other priorities have taken place. Being that we saw what happened on this one, I think we need, those priorities need to be at the forefront of what we do. And I know that the census is going to go over 50, over 50,000, a bunch of brand-new restrictions, regulations, everything going to play. So there has to be changes to the way we do elections anyway, because the census will force us to do that. But why not go ahead of that? Why not look at what we can and can't do, or what we would like to do, and see if we can work it in with what we have? I, I think it's possible. I think all of you were very supportive. Some of you have been on the court longer and have always had that position, some of you are newer to the court, and I understand, you have your precincts, you have your priorities in your precincts, but elections affect all of us, because at one time or another, everybody runs. Everybody runs her office, and so it affects us. We need space. I, my office thinks right now, we have taken over the record room. And some of the, some of the people that usually come in and do their searches and do their things, they're not very happy, but we're not open to the public to begin with, so we just took over the record room. And right now, we got to get it back together now. But we got a runoff coming, and so that means we have to do this again. We do have a runoff coming on December the 19th, and I was, I mean, the city secretary was here last night, and we were trying to go over these reports, so she can do the presentation on her part. I go to those in case the board has any questions or anything, but the presentation's done by, you know, whoever they indicated that they lead, but...
You mean the statewide runoff, the city and...
No, there's a state one, but not for us. It's in District 30, I believe, and we're 20 straight, so we don't have one. The only race that I see right now is the council seat with Yanis Aragau and Steve Webb. Those are the only one, because they have three people running.
Who have a hospital, a company. They don't, they don't...
The hospital, whoever wins, wins.
Yes, they have, yes. And so that was one of the other concerns.
Whoever has the most votes, whoever wins, wins. Whoever has the most votes.
Okay, let me say, we had, we had 15,421 people, whether by mail, email...
You know, as going through here right now, Jane, and one of the things that's concerning to me is that you have people running. I could understand if there was only one person on the ballot, but you have people running, and you have 2,000 people that did not vote?
Correct.
And that's... And that, I mean, how.
What happens is.
The hospital, the school, the county, the city, everybody's just as important as the next one. If you took the opportunity and the time to vote, why wouldn't you vote in the hospital? It just doesn't make any.
See, this is what happens when you don't have straight party voting.
Well, we're not going to get into that.
No, no, I'm just going to say this.
I was just saying, I've been there going through and you have 2,000 people.
Not expressing.
Did not take the opportunity.
They took time to go vote, but they didn't market.
It just, it doesn't make sense. And I can understand, you know, like Sheriff, Sheriff, you know, you didn't have an opponent. I can understand how hell he really don't need to vote. He's already in. But everybody else that you had two people running, two or three people running, why wouldn't you take the opportunity while you're there to cast your dog on the ballot?
I can, I can answer that for you, sir. Because when you don't have straight party voting, you have individual candidates pushing their, their name, their candidacy only. They're not concerned about anybody else.
But I'm a voter. I took the time to vote.
Yes, sir. And there was.
I took the time to read every single one of them.
Yes.
And I can read the other.
You know, we have plenty of.
Four minutes or five minutes to get the rest of it done.
Yeah. And we educate ourselves before election day. You know, we read the sample ballots, we look at the stuff that's put out by the paper. We, we look at those issues all the time. So by the time we get there, we already know, dum, 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 dum.
You're looking.
But that's where, you know, my first question to the city was, why do you have propositions on this ballot? I mean, you're talking about changing your city charter. This is mainly candidates. This is mainly people. Well, I think it was a way that they could get issues finally voted on and enough participation that the vote would be, the turnout vote would be good to even, to effectuate the changes they wanted to make. And I guess, you know, okay, you know, I understand. But.
I'm sorry.
One of, that's okay. One of the questions that we've had, and I don't know if this one of them you have, Judge, but, you know, we had 15,421 voters vote and everybody wanted to know if we had broken some kind of record. Okay? We did not. In 2016, we had 19,082 people. And in 2012, we had 17,743. So we got close. We're in between the 17, between, between 2012 and 2016, we fell right in there, but we did not break any records. Had a lot of early voting, more than usual good, you know, we didn't break any records. Okay, so I don't know. If you don't have any questions on those so that we can get to the actual. I did give you, I think, four reports. One should be the one that was issued at 7:11 PM. The other one was at 12:53 AM and the final one was at, on 11:06, okay? And I also gave you a precinct by precinct report. We do have a question and I'm sure it's going to come up for you because it did from the city yesterday. If you recall, when they initially approved the ballot to be printed, they did not include in precinct 10 and precinct 22, the As and Bs. They have a split precinct in 10, 22, and 30. 30, they had nobody running, so they chose to leave it off and not make any changes because it was going to cost more money. It was already going to cost them money to make these changes.
Huh? Can I leave it through there?
Well, you don't have any candidates running, so it doesn't affect negatively on anyone. But it would have if they would have left out, and which they did, in the first one, the 10A and the 10B. However, our ERM programming cannot, they can split the ballot for you, but it's not going to split the totals. So if you look, you have 10, but you don't have 10A and 10B. However, the way that we calculated that is, we did talk to ESNS last night and the city secretary was there and basically if you look at the candidates that were affected by 10A and 10B, which is Alejandro Calderon and what was his name? Sylvia? Okay, then, okay. Those were the ones that kept telling us that they were neck and neck and this was affecting them. Well, if you take all your precinct reports, part of 10B is in 22. So if you go to precinct 22 and you add the total number of ballots that they got, votes that they got, and put them together everywhere else they are on the ballot, it adds up to the number. ESNS explained that because they, they did it the way they did, and my question was, can we do this differently next time? We may need to separate them by them having a separate ballot. They can have the election at the same time. But we may have to do that if we cannot get their precincts changed. And that's something I'd like to do during redistricting. But for the meantime, they had to put them together at 10. But when you take, I think Marty took it last night and she added up the way ESNS told her to add them and they came out perfect with the number of ballots that they had received, with the number of votes they received. They're all correct. And that's something she's going to have to explain on Monday when they do their. But our concern, this is ours. They were forced to go with us. We have to do it the way the governor said. So there won't be a 10A or a 10B or a 22A or a 22B on our precinct by precinct report.
Let me go in and change your redistricting during redistricting to match where was the lines that we have.
It would be better if we.
And we have, I mean, just, just for example, like precinct one, precinct two on ours upon Eagle Pass Hill, that area out there, I mean, it's like it flip flops back and forth. And then we have another area down here in precinct three and precinct four. I mean, there's other lines, but those right there are big chunks that they're not in line.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, in the next, in the next year.
That's where, that's where we need the attorney that we've hired to point out the areas, like maybe in a different color on the map.
We have the same one. The city and the county has the same, we hired the same firm.
Yes, and I didn't forget to ask him the question. And if I have to twist his arm, I will. He's a friend, so, you know, I say that. But I think that he's going to be reasonable. At least I'm hopeful that that's the case. Because Commissioner has suggested that we get a, some kind of reduction in the fee because he's representing both of us. But that's why I say we got to beat him to the punch. We got to get our stuff down, get it together, put it on the table and get him to work on the maps. So that when we get together, all the different groups get together, our map.
And I think, I'm going to throw it out there. I think, you know, when the lines are drawn before, you sort of wanted to keep Democrats and Republicans separated.
Yep.
That way you knew who, if you're going to win or not win.
Yes.
At this point, I think you can look. People are voting more for the person, not for the party.
Yep.
You know, so I think we need to do more.
That's one of the advantages of not having a straight party.
Well, and my deal is though, if you're going to win, you're going to win. If you're going to lose, you're going to lose. I mean, it's one of those.
And if you're going to work, you're going to work it and it's.
Yeah. So me, like I say, I mean, you can look at the lines and the way the lines are drawn. You're sort of trying to keep, you know, let the Republicans win precinct three and let the Democrats in this county win the other three precincts. I mean, that's just the way, and you can tell by the way the lines are drawn.
Okay.
You know, I really believe though that if we do this right.
It's a win-win situation.
If you're going to work it, you're going to work it. If they're going to vote for you, they're going to vote for you and we just need to move on, go on down the road.
Yeah. And if they lose, you.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Pick up your balls and go home or do something else.
Yeah, leave the ball here.
Leave the ball. It's a relaxed horse. All right. The last thing I want to cover, and I know some of you knew because some of you asked me a lot of questions or would come and ask me or would call me. We did have a legal issue arise during the, the last day, the, the following day. Because it was morning, it was 2 o'clock in the morning. We did have an issue come up in that the election code requires that voting can be done continuously. Balloting and counting, counting is to be continuously. On the 4th at 2 o'clock in the morning, we had someone leave and it broke the process. I got together with Frank and Rose and I don't know, Frank, if you want to come up and say anything on that. You're welcome to, for my presentation. However, at 2 o'clock in the morning, we had to figure something out. And because they were just not bringing this person back. And, I mean, I'm not going to bash the person. They had their own reasons why they were doing what they were doing. However, it put the county in a situation where we still had like almost 800 or 900 ballots to count. And the process could not be stopped. So on Wednesday morning, I did what I needed to do to preserve and protect the ballots that were still needed to be counted. And, and then I reached out to the Secretary of State, which gave me some direction on what I needed to do. And I basically had to apply for a, an order from the district court that allowed me to continue the process and finish counting. So I have included a copy of the application that I filed. And I thank Judge Karina who came to my rescue because other people were on the ballot. So we couldn't reach out to those persons. And so Judge Karina signed the order which allowed us to protect those 800 votes and in order for them to be counted. Otherwise, they, they would have had to have been thrown out. And that would have caused more damage to the whole process of elections and democracy and everything else. So we're very grateful to him that he was able to, I was able to get the order from him. And so there's a copy of my application that I made and a copy of the order that he signed. So that allowed us, I think, Friday, right? I think we couldn't do it on that Thursday, so we had to go to the Friday because the, the party chairs had to get people, new people, so that we could continue what we needed to do. And that was done on Friday. Thus leads to this. The numbers on the outside of the final report, the ones that are handwritten, was everything that came in on Monday, the 9th, by the deadline. Everything else that's on the, thanks to the last column, that those included all the Friday tallying and numbers and everything. So the, the process was finished. You had one extra set. Let you find, I forgot. My apologies, Frank. You couldn't follow what I was presenting. So basically you would be approving 8,200, for example, on the Trump race, 8,276 plus the eight that I have on the column. Because those, at that point, we're through counting, election day and early voting. And the only thing we're waiting for is the FPCAs that need to get here by the, by the deadline. And those are handwritten on the, off to the side there. I think we had a total of 16 or 19 come in and they accepted 19. I think just one was, was not accepted. So if you want me to, I can, I can go through the, the numbers. I think you probably already read all of them. But just, just so you know, that the total votes column needs to, you need to add the final count number that was done on 11/10.
So the precinct by precinct is everything?
Everything except what's written on the margin because we had already closed down everything by then because it really was completed on Friday evening. And we just waited till 5 o'clock on Monday morning and these were the, the ballots that did come in and that qualified. Now, to your earlier question, yes, we did get some on Tuesday, a couple on Wednesday, not Wednesday, Thursday. So I don't think there's more than 25, but there are, there are some and we don't know if there'll be more coming. But that is the full report.
I make a motion to please the canvassing of the 2021 election.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second advice.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wardlaw. Anybody have any other questions? All those in favor?
All right.
4-0 vote. Commissioner Voskis is not present. Is someone, is there anything else?
No, sir. I will be coming back to the court once we know all the expenses and we get everything, bills all in and everything. But I do want to let the court know that part of that $43,000 grant that I got back during COVID was used to offset so many expenses for the PPE equipment and stuff we got supplies. But we were very lucky. We had people donating stuff to us from other departments and I'm very grateful to them. Because that allowed us for the people, the clerks, to be changing their gowns and their clothes and their masks more often than we would have if we had to, you know, hold back on some of those things.
So our homework is to work on redistricting?
Yes, sir. Get the census number out first so we know a little bit and get it done. And I'm here to answer questions. I, I've done, in my previous job, I did some redistricting, familiar with it. But I, by no means I'm an expert, that's Mr. Rios. And, but I think that we can communicate well with him and, and let him know what the concerns are. We may want to bring him in and let him know that as a court or maybe the judge sending him a letter.
I think send him in as a court.
Yeah, so that, so that he understands what the ultimate goal is going to be.
And we explained it to him when we did it the last time.
Yeah.
What we didn't have any help, I mean, it is, you know, it isn't one side or another. We're all going to have to pull together.
Yes.
It's going to be a city-county joint venture.
Yes.
And if we can get that to happen for the people, then I think.
Yes, and I think we need to have some public meetings too so that the voter themselves have an ability to, to express the concerns and the difficulties they've had in, in reaching us or getting.
You sent a little log on machines. How many machines were, how many machines were that we need to replace? And we don't have any more other machines sitting aside?
Uh, no, no, no. We have a total of 23 sets of everything. So that includes every machine, for example, the automark, the one that reads the ballot, the one that, if you can't hear, you can do it. We have 23 of those. We have 23 M100s and we have 23 ballot boxes. Okay? The M100s are the ones that are starting to show some problems. And those are the ones, they're, they're the ballot scanner. So we did not put three of those machines out because we just, they just couldn't figure out what's wrong with them. I wasn't going to put them out. On the pulpad, we also may need to expand and get more. We, the school district bought their own when they had a bond election and they've always allowed me to use them. And they give permission to the vendor to program them.
For us.
With us. So we have like 20 pulpads and then there's six. So we use a total of 26 pulpads. We do need to spend a little time, and this is something I'm going to sit with Ram and Stephen. You can relay the message. We had difficulty and we're still having difficulty uploading our information to the Secretary of State. We don't know what happened. Somewhere along the 15th of October, something happened because we have an 11 o'clock deadline. Every morning, you have to upload your information from the day before. We started and it went fine and everything was fine and there was no indication that the information wasn't being uploaded. However, someone looking at those numbers pointed out to me that if you looked at the numbers, it seemed like it was the same list of people. So I stuck, we started looking at it and I said, oh boy, what happened here on this particular day? So in talking with the Secretary of State, the only thing they could come up was they called it a glitch. I said, yeah, but you need to fix the glitch because we're still uploading, we're still in early voting. We waited and Olivia would call every day and she'd get on there and she'd try to upload information and it was, that 15th date was still there and it wasn't moving, it wasn't being corrected. So we contacted them and said, well, we need to know what's going on. And one of the things that they asked us to do was to check our vendor for the pulpads because that uploads numbers. But we generate the number and we upload the number, the vendor doesn't. So we couldn't understand what was going on and we still, it didn't, it didn't get resolved. We saw no solution. They weren't working on it. We weren't able to put. We saw no solution, they weren't working on it, we weren't able to put stuff in. So I just took and put everything on the website. Our website, the county website, everything is there. All the precinct by precincts, the daily rosters of people that voted, everything is there. We frankly didn't have any choice. The judge was getting calls, I was getting calls, everybody was getting calls, and we didn't see any other way to resolve it. Since then, I think it was this week, they called Linda and, and asked her to go in a different way to the website and try to upload some of those, that information. Frankly, I think it's a waste of time. We're on our last election, uh, for the year, and we'd have to do everything else again on January. So being that the information's out there and it's on our website, we just need to refer people there to get, don't rely. And I did take away the link to the Secretary of State's, because it's not there. It won't let us do it. Now, she's slowly having to go through the back door to put some information, because we want to be able to comply with what the regulations are with the Secretary of State. We don't want to be in violation with them. So she, it's a slow process, it's one person trying to do it, and we have all these fifteen thousand voters that need to be uploaded to them. So, um, I made it clear to them that we're going to do it, but you're going to have to work with our timeframe, because it's not, it's not something that was our fault. There's nothing in our software or anything, because we're not connected to the internet. That's another thing that people are concerned about. We can pull a report from our equipment, then that report is uploaded through her computer. So it's not the same as being connected and it updating automatically. It is something that I would like to look at, but for Valverde County. So that if somebody wants to look to see if, if we, they got their, we got their ballot, they can go on, just like the state one, but it would be locally for Valverde County. So that people can see if your, if your ballot got here or not. But it is going to involve, um, I T and some technology. And based on our assessment that we had done from the Secretary of State a couple years ago, um, all that information needs to be segregated from the regular server. So those are all things that I need to discuss with Ram. I haven't even touched that subject matter yet.
Ms. Jenny, the, the machines that we have right now, you said that if we were going to go purchase machines, we'd have to have somebody that had already upgraded. If we were going to upgrade, is there, is there a market for our machines?
There may be. They have told us that because it was purchased with a federal grant, our first choice is to offer it to any of the other entities that are using the same kind of equipment. That would be the first one. The second one was for us to sell it to some of the entities that are still using our government and want to expand their use or increase.
I mean, if, not necessarily buy them, but I'm just saying if we got a price on, on them and then we can sort of figure out what we get for ours, it might soften the blow a little bit.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's not something that would happen right now?
I don't know, because these machines tend to have bought in twenty fourteen. So the market for a machine.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, my, my deal is though, that, I mean, I'd hate to have to, you know, take a half a million dollars and just haul them to the dump.
Oh, no, I don't know that the.
I'm just saying, I mean, or have them sitting in storage or something.
Yeah, and paying storage fees. Yes, I understand that. I'm sure, uh, that there is something in the election code that tells us how we're to.
Dispose?
Dispose. I haven't looked at that, um, but I'm sure, I'm sure that there's something they can help us with.
Again, I'm not saying court's going to go and spend another half a million dollars on machines, but we need to.
Can we buy half and then half? Can we buy half and then half?
You start piecemealing it together and then when you go to buy the other half, the first half and the last leave, you're going to start with who you started. You're going to replace the system, you're going to replace.
Yeah, if you recall, um, back in March, I think I had scheduled, and somebody was supposed to come in and do, talk to us about what we currently have and how that could be improved from E S N S. And because of COVID, we had to put off that presentation. Whenever we get ready, I think it's something that we should listen to first before we start deciding. I mean, it's possible we could.
We have two years until we have another big election.
Yes.
So we have two years to figure this out and get it up and running if we're going to make it.
Correct.
So, and we all know two years goes by real quick.
Yes. First census and then redistricting. And then machine. All right. Well, thank you all very much. I have, I've given you copies of all of those reports. Sheriff, you want to do this one up here? He did ask me for copies, so.
Just make sure we get one done, Commissioner Voskis.
Yes, and then, um, Linda, can you make sure we get it out?
Enough, just put it in a package and make sure it's in his office.
Yes.
All right, are we done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
We're good?
Okay, thank you all very much.
Biggie's adjourned. Thank y'all.